I'll call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. It is Monday, September 26, 2011. Dr. Richardson, your agenda changes?
Yes, if you'll check your table file, you'll see that we have some additional personnel items in terms of appointments and increase, decrease, and change in assignments. We've also got requests for one additional, excuse me, two additional overnight trips, including a Nordic ski trip and a baseball spring break trip. And you also have in your packet a graphic that we'll be using as part of the presentation on the operating levy and capital projects levy tonight, just as an additional piece of documentation.
Okay, very good. There's no objection. We'll add those items to the consent grouping as we move through the evening. We have opportunity now for public comment, and this is a chance for members of the school district to address the board. We ask that you speak from the podium, that you state your name and address, the group you represent, if you are here speaking on behalf of a group. And then we also ask that you limit your remarks to three minutes. And I do want to remind the public, this is not an opportunity to dialogue or debate with the board, but really a listening opportunity for us. And we do very much appreciate that opportunity. So is there anyone here who wishes to address the board?
Yep, I do. Thank you very much. My name is Carol Meant, and I live at 717 Second Street East. I don't represent any groups. I'm here as a parent with two children in the Sibley School. On September 16th, my kindergartner came home with this, a lollipop and a Rice Krispie treat that were handed out to every child in her kindergarten class by another child whose birthday it was. And she came home with this. And I don't know if she already had eaten cake or whether this was it, but... So, you know, I try to be very careful about what my kids eat and try to limit their sugar intake. And as a school, I would think that the school district has an incentive and a moral obligation to provide healthy food for the children while they're in school. So I emailed her kindergarten teacher, Mr. Lovquist, and the principal of Sibley, Mr. Scott Sanus, and asked me if there's a policy with children being sent home with sweets. And there's no policy on that. Children can be sent home with treats. It's not forbidden. And Mr. Sanus emailed me on September 19th saying, "Well, I'm certainly not in favor of a total ban on sweets. I'm interested in making sure our children are properly nourished and ready to learn. Eating light comes down to making the correct choices. While schools can do their part to encourage proper eating habits, we as parents need to equip our children with the proper decision-making skills to make those choices." So, of course, my immediate thought was my five-year-old is not going to choose not to eat this. And by me at home talking to her about healthy food and giving her healthy food, I'm trying to do that, but at five years old, she doesn't have the ability yet to make a choice about eating a Rice Krispie treat and a lollipop. So I guess I would advocate for the school board to at least consider some kind of policy on candy, sweets, treats, not necessarily being eaten at school, because I understand parents want to send a cake with their child for their birthday, and I'm not in favor of a total ban on sweets either. But where I draw the line is sending a lollipop home with my child from school that was given out to her during school time. And so I would like to request that the board consider somehow creating a policy that would be reasonable and enforceable without undue burden, that children are not coming home from school with candy, sweets, treats, et cetera. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'm sure you're aware that the district has been working hard to improve the choices available at our school lunches and that sort of thing. And I think we have been making a lot of good progress on that. And I applaud you for your efforts at home as well. I did, you know, it's a little unclear to me how this would fit in with a district policy. I'm glad that you brought this to the public comment portion, because I think it will draw some attention to it, and I think it probably will engender some discussion among parents. I did want to ask you, and we're supposed to have dialogue, but I did want to ask you about one thing in your email, and you mentioned it here too, that as a family, you try to limit the consumption of sugar, but you wouldn't mind if your child ate it at school, but you don't want your child bringing it home. And I could see some parents thinking far better to bring it home so we can make our family decision about it, rather than the school allowing it to happen at school without parents' knowledge. And I just wonder if you've thought about that or had conversation about that with the people?
Well, when I say eating at school, I envision a piece of cake, which you obviously can't carry home. I guess I didn't envision my child eating a lollipop while they're in school. I don't know exactly how that would work, whether teachers would allow that. But I guess the fact that my child is coming home with more sugar, she walks in the door, she's got this lollipop, I can try to take it away from her, I can try to say, "You can't have that," but then I'm the bad guy, you know? And I'm the one who's trying very hard at home to make sure that it doesn't even come into my house. I don't want to have to be the one in my house that is, and she still has this, she hasn't eaten it yet, but I'm going to let her eat it, but I don't want to be the one that, you know, takes it away from her and throws it in the garbage. And this is the first time it's happened. She's only in kindergarten, but I'm wondering if this is going to be 22 times a year, because there's 22 kids in her class and there's 22 birthdays? Or is it going to be just once and it's not going to happen again? So that's why I wanted to address it now.
Well, I appreciate you bringing it forward. And as I say, I think it may generate some discussion among parents as to, you know, what the appropriate role is for the school district when classmates want to celebrate with their, with fellow students. We do review our policies on a regular basis, and so we will definitely keep this in mind as we're looking at our policies. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Anybody else have remarks they would like to share? Okay, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packet the minutes of the regular meeting held on September 12, 2011. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion.
By Jeff, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ellen, any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes of the regular meeting held on September 12, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Announcements and recognitions. You will notice that we have a closed negotiation strategy session immediately after this board meeting. Dr. Richardson, are there other announcements?
Yes, I've actually got four other announcements this evening. First of all, we're very pleased to announce that Northfield High School has three National Merit semifinalists. They are Jasmine Marksdale, and Parker Patterson, and Muriel Carpenter, who is also happens to be daughter of one of our school board members, Anne Maple. We also have seven commended scholars, Eric Bertelson, Joseph, and I'm going to mess this up, whether it's Brake or Brockie.
Brake.
Brake, very good. Joseph Brake, Elizabeth Caulfield, Eduardo...
Carmio.
Carmio, very good. Dana O'Donnell, Connor Rowley, and Keegan Ryan. So we really want to congratulate these students and their parents, and we'll be having a reception for these students and their families before the November 14th school board meeting. And as you know, what we do then is back the school board meeting up so that we can have this activity, and it's, I think, is a really positive one for kids and parents and also teachers of these kids who are identified as part of the process. I'd also like to congratulate the work, especially of our buildings and our custodial staff, who've been working hard to recycle and compost as much of our waste as we can. All of our buildings now have two or four large dumpsters outside. Each one is intended to collect different items. All six schools are now composting their school waste, and as you remember, we had started with a couple buildings looking at that, and now we've moved to all of the buildings. And as a result, basically over 800 pounds each day will not go into the landfill because of that composting. If we do the math, that's over eight tons a month that will become usable compost. So again, another effort as we go forward in terms of looking not only at saving costs, but also in terms of being green. We'd also like to congratulate Greenvale Park PTO. They've been doing some serious thinking about how to expand the involvement of parents and parent communication. And so they've moved from a traditional PTO type of program to a monthly information night this year. The first one of those was last Tuesday, and they had 34 parents and 44 children attend. So they were very, very pleased with how that worked out. And again, we hope that will continue to work that way. Also, and I'm sorry that our presenter tonight was not able to stay, but the other piece that is now on our district website as of today is a posted piece on our Farm to School Initiative. And if you remember, Pam had talked to you guys earlier about the Farm to School Initiative and the strategy of bringing fresh produce and vegetables and so on into the school. We have a nice piece that was done by Minnesota 2020, and that now is copied onto our website so you can go on. And there's about a two-and-a-half-minute video clip that you can watch directly from the main page of the video, our main page of our website, which I think really demonstrates some good work on the part of our food service staff and Pam in terms of thinking about how do we really make those connections, plus some really positive comments from local farmers about how that's impacted them also. So again, all very positive things going forward.
Anybody else have anything to add? Julie?
I just want to acknowledge Matt Hillman and the district for, once again, re-realizing the importance of the Sky Alert system with the 246 construction this week and being able to tell parents that the buses were running 25 minutes behind was huge, because five or 10 minutes, you know, either way, you're worried about your kid. And my daughter's bus was actually 25 minutes late, so it was really nice to get that heads up and to be able to communicate that district-wide as quickly as we're able to do that with Sky Alert.
And have it all, Mr. Sanus.
Thank you, Scott.
But it's really a powerful tool in terms of not only emergency kinds of communication, but I guess we also hope to do a number of other pieces. And the balance, as Matt has shared with me on a number of occasions and tried to pound into my head every once in a while, is the balance of making sure that we don't overuse it to where people don't look, but also don't underuse it when there are things that it's beneficial for parents and families to have information about. And in fact, I know one of the things that we're talking about doing now is getting a Sky Alert message out about the October 4th information night on the operating levy and capital projects levy, again, as another way of letting people know about that and giving folks an opportunity to attend that and ask questions if they have those.
Good. Does anybody else have anything? Okay, we have one item for discussion, and it is, Dr. Richardson will present on the operating levy and the capital projects levy that are coming up for a vote on November 8th. Some of us have seen this. I think it continues to be improved, but tonight we'll have an opportunity to hear the presentation and offer any suggestions or clarifying questions or anything in preparation for the public meeting on October 4th. So, Dr. Richardson?
All right. Thank you very much. And again, I would really encourage you, as I go through this, if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer those, but I'm also really looking for your feedback. We're trying to create a presentation that will provide as much good information as we can, but also not bury people in information so that they get lost in terms of the core concepts. Again, this presentation is just a small part of the information that we're trying to share right now in terms of our upcoming operating levy and capital projects levy. In fact, this particular presentation is also on the website already with a, actually it's more than a voiceover, it's actually a voice and video with me in the corner talking, and basically the large part of the screen with the slides from the PowerPoint presentation. So that's on there. There's a number of elements that talk about each part of the levy. There's already a levy calculator that's up, so that if individuals have their taxable market value information or have their taxable markets, the statement that they have from last year in terms of their taxable market value, they'll be able to plug that number in and get exactly what would be the additional taxes involved in terms of the operating levy. We also put information out about the circuit breaker and other strategies for those individuals that need to have options to help them reduce the impact of the taxes. So we're trying to get that information out. As soon as we complete and have the final version of the levy guide ready to print, which is going to print this week, we'll also put the levy guide onto the website so that that'll be available for people to look at. And our intention at this point is to have the levy guide in homes by October, beginning October the 4th.
Yeah, the 4th.
Beginning October the 4th. So again, if people are saying, "Well, I'm not getting information about this," or "I haven't seen very much information about this," please let them know there's a number of things they can look at on the website. Also, the levy guide will be coming out. There'll be several pieces that are required, mandatory mailings that we have to make, and Danita has been working furiously on those. And to get those in place, actually, we've already started with the, as of what, tomorrow? Absentee ballots. We've already had three absentee ballots already. So that's also up and running. So all of those things are really happening already in terms of this process. What I would like to do tonight is just walk you through this piece. And again, please, if you can give me additional feedback, as Carrie said, she got kind of the first shot of this. We've made several adjustments based on her initial comments. So again, as you see this, or if there are things that don't seem clear, or you'd say, "Gee, I wish you could have said that in a different way and it would have made more sense," those are the kinds of feedback. And I know between Hannah and I and Stephanie and Matt, we'll try to catalog those pieces so we'll be ready to make any other adjustments. Basically, when we look at the upcoming operating levy and capital projects levy, we're really looking at the fact that this levy is being proposed at this time because it's been very difficult for us to continue to achieve our mission as a school district. And in fact, that mission has been compromised based on the inadequacy and the uncertainty of state funding over the last decade. Basically, as a district, we've made about $4 million, or 17% of our district's budget in cuts over the last six years, including just recently, as you're all aware of, a $700,000 cut for the 2011-12 school year. What's been the impact of these cuts? Well, basically, since 2004-05, we've seen an increase in class sizes of three to four students per classroom. Those of you that can think back in terms of the classrooms that your children would have been in six or seven years ago would have been looking at class sizes that were significantly smaller than they are right now. We've also seen reductions in teachers, administrative, custodial, and support staff. We've also seen some significant changes in our transportation services to help reduce costs, and we've eliminated several program options for students. I think, as you also know, and we presented on a number of occasions to the board, we've also tried to do a number of things just to reduce costs. And that's included the renegotiation of every service contract, saving almost $450,000 per year. We've made adjustments and modifications in our copier contract, energy and waste garbage reduction, transportation and fuel contracts, self-insurance and workers' compensation, and self-insurance both in our health insurance and in our dental insurance, and also modifications in our property and liability insurance coverages and carriers. We've also, as all of you know, have gone through a process with the support and collaboration of all 16 of the units that are part of our district staff, 0% increases and no step increases for all staff members during the last two years. Why have these cuts been necessary? Well, they've been due to reduce state revenue and increase costs of mandated programs. What we know is that over the last six years, we've had three of those years where we've had state and federal funding freezes. And in fact, when we did see some significant increase in federal funding, that increase was used simply to fill the hole in terms of deficit state spending, and so did not travel out to the local districts. There've really also been no inflationary increases, in other words, increases that match the level of inflation since 2003. We've also had state shifts in state aid payments. And as you're very well aware, we've moved from a 90%, 10% to a 60%, 40% shift. 90%, 10%, meaning that back in 2006, we got 90% of the funding that was owed to us in the year it was owed to us, and we only were held back 10% that was paid the following year. Now we have 60% of our funding that we receive in the current year, and 40% will be held back and paid in the following year. And I would liken that to someone who has a paycheck, and they basically say, "All right, I'm making $10,000 a year, but my boss comes to me and says, 'Times are tough. I'm only going to pay you $6,000 this year, and I'll pay you the other $4,000 next year.'" And yet, I have to make a payment on a house or an apartment, I have to maybe make a payment on my car, I need to keep up my health and other kinds of insurance. And so basically, it puts school districts in an extremely difficult position. And the shift basically does mainly supports the state in terms of the fact that it gives them the opportunity not to have to borrow, and also to balance their budget, even though they don't have all the resources to do so. For our school district alone, that shift from 90-10 to 60-40 has caused a $7.5 million drop in our cash balance, and we will see a $2.4 million drop for 2011-12 alone. We've also seen the state go through short-term borrowing, and we've talked about that at the board meeting over the last several years. Two years ago, they borrowed $4 million from us. A year ago, they borrowed $1 million from us. And that was from the money that was not shifted. And what they basically did there was said, "Well, in the money that's not shifted, we're just going to hold back and not pay you state aid payments that might have been due in October and November. We're going to wait and pay those payments in May or June." And again, that was strictly to deal with cash flow borrowing. And so that, basically, they said to school districts, "You figure out how to cover those costs, because that way, as a state, we won't have to borrow in order to do it." One of the good things that's happened out of this last legislative session is they eliminated that state short-term borrowing going forward, and basically said that that is not going to happen anymore. Good news. We've also seen increased costs of mandated special education and ESL programs and services. And we've talked about this a number of times before, but I think, as you're very well aware, we have significant levels of mandated service in both special education and ESL, which are not fully funded by the state or federal government. And these are costs above and beyond what it costs to educate a regular child. This year alone, basically, $3.1 million will be spent to subsidize underfunded mandates. And so for us as a school district, as we look at trying to address and make sure that we meet the needs of all of our children, what we know is $3.1 million comes out of our regular district budget to deal with those excess costs every single school year. So what are we looking forward to at this point? Well, our sense is that we're very likely to see continued freezes and shifts and potential borrowing, which may further erode quality programs. The reason for this is because the state really has not addressed the structural deficit that it has in its own budget. If you remember, we talked about the $5 to $6 million deficit during the last legislative session. Well, the reality is, the way they balanced the budget for this biennium was to borrow money from schools and borrow through shifts, and borrow money from future tobacco settlement payments in order to fill the gap in their budget. And they really did not address the structural deficit, either with cuts or with additional revenue. What we know also is that as we move forward, without an operating levy renewal, we will need to cut $900,000 for 2013-14, and that's when the existing operating levy still has the last year that it's still in place. And if the operating levy is not passed, we'll be looking at a $6.7 million cut for 2014-15. And what I would just call your attention to is the one-page handout that I provided for you, this one, which basically shows what that impact looks like. So what we're looking at here is basically, over the last several years, since the levy was implemented, we actually have seen slightly more revenue than expenditures. So we've been able to keep ahead of the expenditure side and actually save some of that money back, which then we've used to offset the increasing expenditures. But our expenditures continue to go up by about 2.4%. Is that close enough, Stephanie?
Yeah.
2.4%. Between 2% and 3% each year. And people might ask, "Well, why?" Well, because there are lots of things that are currently in our budget that are beyond our control, and not the least of which is the special education costs and the ESL costs, but also things like gasoline and diesel fuel, things like insurance costs, things like textbook costs and other kinds of pieces that frankly don't stay within any kind of consumer price index level. So what we know that we're facing at this point, as we look at this levy sheet, is that right away in 2013-14, you already begin to see a gap. And you see the amount of revenue that we have available, even with the operating levy in place that last year, already does not meet the expenditures, which is why we're talking about a $900,000 cut for 2013-14. And then, when that levy expires, if it's not renewed, then we see a huge drop, and we will basically be looking at making cuts every single year into the future without a renewal of the operating levy. So it's very important for people to see what the significant gap is and how that gap gets bigger. And it really does reflect on the fact that while in the past, we've seen the state trying over the years to keep up with their costs and keep up with the fact that there is some inflationary increase that occurs in education each year, because we've seen several years without that, now the gap is much larger, and we can't really fill it now without the operating levy. So why are we doing it now? Because the operating levy proposal maintains and increases the stability of our comprehensive district programming for as long as possible by maintaining a positive fund and cash balance that lessens the impact of state and federal shortfalls. So does it eliminate them? No, it doesn't. But what it does is it gives us stability for as long as we can have it, and it helps us to provide and continue the programming that I think our community expects. The second levy that we're looking at is the capital projects levy. That proposal provides continued stewardship of district facilities. And we've talked about stewardship a number of times at this table, and the importance of maintaining a quality facility, keeping our equipment in good running order, trying to upgrade and update our technology, doing all the things we can to support learning and provide a high-quality educational environment. So what's happening on Tuesday, November 8th, we're basically submitting two proposed levies to voters in the Northfield Public School District. First of all, an operating levy, that's all about maintaining current comprehensive programs and staffing for as long as possible. And a capital projects levy, which is to maintain the stewardship of district facilities and equipment, including 760,000 square feet of space under roof located in six different buildings and 153 acres of land that we're responsible for as a school district. So if we take a look specifically at the proposed operating levy, again, to maintain programs and staffing, what we're proposing is revoking the existing $1,270 per student levy with inflation that currently is in place, and proposing a replacement operating levy of $1,604 per student with inflation for 10 years, beginning in 2012-13. Again, the $604 is the cap that the state has set in terms of the amount of dollars that a local school district can ask for. And again, our approach is that by looking at the cap, it gives us an ability to increase our fund balance and cash balance, and we will use it like a savings account to make up for... up for state and federal shortfalls. Very similarly to what we've been able to use the operating levy for since 2006. When we take a look at the operating levy, based on current revenue and expenditure assumptions, passage of the operating levy would avoid further cuts for at least three or four years or more. And again, the big question mark there is, it depends. It depends on what the state does, it depends on what the federal government does in terms of the level of funding they provide and the shortfalls that occur. But we believe that by placing the levy proceeds in the fund balance, we assure the greatest long-term stability for the current programs and staffing we have regardless of what is happening at the state and federal level. So how do we compare in terms of our operating levy with other comparable districts around the state? Well, currently, there are 57 districts that have higher operating levies than Northfield, including many of the districts we're compared with because of our comprehensive, high-quality educational programs. So when you hear districts like Wayzetta, Edina, Minnetoka, Hopkins, Burnsville, Hastings, and on and on and on, basically, all of those districts have higher levies than we currently have at $1,270 per pupil. These comparable districts have levies as high as $1,866 per pupil. And you say, and wait a minute, I thought $1,604 was the cap. Well, there are a number of districts in the state that are, have what are called grandfathered caps because they were actually levying at higher levels before the last state aid formula was put in place. And so those districts are able to levy above even the cap that's available for other districts. We currently receive almost $600 per pupil or $15,000 per 25-student classroom less to spend on teaching and learning than those comparable districts. And so again, when we are being compared with those folks in terms of the programming we provide, in terms of elementary programs, in terms of immersion programs, in terms of the level of AP and other activities that we have, in terms of the variety of curricular and co-curricular offerings we provide, those are the districts we get compared with, but the funding we have available does not match up. Also, when we look at our total revenue per pupil, which includes both the other state funding, including the operating levies, there are currently 141 districts out of the 336 districts in the state that have more total revenue per pupil, including the operating levy than Northfield. Now we have a much larger list of folks that have more dollars to spend than we do. Even with the proposed operating levy increase, there would still be 95 or almost a third of the districts in the state will still have more revenue per pupil total to spend on their students. Without the operating levy, there would be over 300 of the 336 K-12 districts would have more revenue per pupil than Northfield. Obviously, people want to know what's the bottom line? What's this going to cost me? Well, the information that we're sharing with our community at this point is the annual additional tax impact of the operating levy is approximately $73 per $100,000 of taxable value or $6 per month. And the cost for different taxable values is simply a simple multiplication. If you have a $200,000 house, you take 2 times 73 or 2 times 6. So it's $146 on a $200,000 house or $12 a month. And again, the calculator that's available on our website will allow you to calculate specifically the impact of this proposed levy on your piece of property. Also, it's important for people to remember that the operating levy is not levied on agricultural land or on seasonal and recreational property, which we don't have a lot of in the Northfield School District, but which is there in a number of other places around the state. So when an individual who owns a farmstead looks at their operating levy impact, it really is only on their home and one acre, which usually is where the outbuildings are located. The second levy that we're talking about tonight is the capital projects levy. The purpose of that levy is to maintain district facilities and equipment. What we're proposing there is simply the continuation of the $750,000 per year of capital projects levy for 10 years after the current expiration in 2013-14. Again, this was one of the positive things that the legislature did for us this year is that they modified the way we could approach the capital projects levy, which allowed us to pass or to propose passage of a levy which simply waits until the current capital project levy expires and then continues it on for the 10 years after that. It's important for people to know that there's no additional tax impact to district residents for continuing the existing capital projects levy. It's also important for people to know, however, that passage of this levy is contingent on passage of the operating levy. So if the operating levy proposal does not pass, the capital projects levy also does not pass regardless of the number of votes. Again, this levy would allow continuing stewardship of district facilities, equipment, technology, and textbooks. So what happens if the operating levy is approved? Basically, we would have the greatest stability in place while the state attempts to address their structural deficit and their constitutionally mandated K-12 funding. Again, please remember that the only two things that are listed in the Constitution of Minnesota that the state is responsible for providing and funding are primary roads and K-12 education. And so we believe that and understand that the state is really struggling to figure out how to fund that right now. What we want to do is basically give them the longest amount of time to do that before we have to begin cutting back on programs and staffing. Because we absolutely know that when you cut back, it is very, very difficult to bring it back. And second, we know that childhood doesn't have a rewind. A child who doesn't get a high-quality first-grade education can't come back three or four years later when we're in better financial shape and take first grade over again. So we believe it's extremely important to try to provide a high-quality educational program and to do it with the least amount of disruption as we can. This levy also allows us to maintain programs and staff at 2011-12 levels for at least three to four years or more. And again, it depends on what's happening at that time with the state and feds in terms of their ability to continue funding. It also maintains class sizes at the 2011-12 level for at least three to four years or more into the future. So the important thing here is that it gives us the ability to maintain what we have, to provide the quality program that I think that Northfield residents have come to expect. What happens if it's not approved? Well, we're looking at that point at across-the-board cuts beginning in 2013-14. And remember, that's the year, the last year in which the current levy is still in place. We will have to cut 14 to 15 staff members at that time. And we will look at seeing some increase in class sizes across the district K-12 along with cuts in student services, support staff, and administration. And then in 2014-15, if the levy is allowed to expire without renewal, we'll be cutting 115 to 120 teachers, student services, support staff, and administrators. And we will see class sizes increasing by four to six students in every classroom K-12. And we know that will happen because when we had to cut 10% back in 2005-6, we saw an increase, a loss of basically 25 to 30 staff members and we saw our class sizes going up three to four students. So we know that there's going to be a significant impact. And especially because over the years since then, we've tried to make as many cuts as possible as far away from the classroom as we can. And the problem is, when 85% of your budget is salary and benefits, as it should be. Again, we're no different than a hospital or any other institution whose job is to care and provide service for people. We have no alternative but to have to cut in that area because there really aren't, there's not enough funding in other areas that isn't required funding that we have to go in this direction. And that's unfortunate, but that's reality in terms of what would happen if the levy's not approved. What about the capital projects levy and its impact if it passes or fails? Well, if it passes, we're going to continue to do the kinds of things we've done with our 10-year facilities plan. That's include, included roof replacement and repair, building repairs and remodeling, upgrading of our instructional technology and adding additional instructional technology as we move forward, and textbook replacement, all of which will be able to continue as they have before. And I think as people look at our facilities, they're proud of those facilities because we keep our facilities up. We maintain them in good shape and we make sure that as things were out, that we're getting them repaired and replaced. Capital projects levy fails and we now have $750,000 less per year to use for those pieces. It will severely limit the amount of repairs we can make on roof and building. Our instructional technology would be stretched as far as we could stretch it, but again, we would not be able to make any kinds of significant purchases there. And textbook replacement would also be stretched out many years into the future because of that significantly reduced funding. So that's the information on the operating levy and the capital projects levy coming up. And again, what I'd like to ask is if you have any comments about the presentation or things that you saw that you said, gee, I wish you could have made that clear or more straightforward, we'd like to try to get those pieces done because I'm currently out now doing, I've done kind of all the presentations inside the system to each of the different buildings. Next step now will be moving to presentations to each of the PTOs, presentations to a number of service organizations, and again, trying to get that information out to people who want to have it. The other thing you may have noticed is that Saturday, we had the second of eight pieces in the Northfield News. We've worked closely with the editor from the Northfield News to basically do an eight-part series to look at the operating levy and talk about the different pieces involved. And again, trying to provide information for those people, for the newspapers, their primary source. But we also will be adding this kind of information to what they provide. So again, any thoughts or ideas? And again, I have loyal scribes that I'm sure will be happy to grab any pieces.
Okay. Anyone have any comments? Noel?
I have, I probably have 25 or 30 nickel-dime ones, but I'm not sure we need to take the time to go through.
But you have notes you can give me at the end, as you always do, okay?
Yeah.
That's good.
Can you flash some of the slides back?
Sure, I think I can.
So I can give the board some idea where I'm chipping away at.
See where the technology.
Yeah, alright.
How far back do you want to go?
First one, second one.
Second slide, okay. All right. How about slide two?
The very bottom line is eliminate of program options for students. That mean, all of the program options are eliminated?
No, this was the impact of the cuts that occurred in 2004-05 and 506. And those included things like summer school.
Yeah.
Included the elimination of the construction classes, which we had partnered with Randolph, backing up on several other class options in terms of the number of elective that we provided in those areas.
If somebody wants to pick away at that one, they could say, it looks like you eliminated all the program options, when indeed, you eliminated several of them. So I would say eliminate of several program options for students. That's the kind of comment.
Okay.
Go to the next slide.
Okay.
Negotiation of 0% base increases and no step increases for all staff members. And I think the reading public is going to have a difficult time understanding what a base increase is and how it applies to the 200 and what?
Actually, the 550 staff members. Because every one of them.
I don't know what the better word might be, I'm not in the business.
And I don't know whether we want to use cost of living.
I understand.
I mean, my sense is, senior citizens understand COLA.
Yep. I didn't have a better word.
But sometimes COLA engenders.
I didn't have a better suggestion.
But yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Base seems like the very bottom, and indeed, the bottom impacts everybody on that card.
Exactly, yeah.
That's one. Just flip to the next one.
Okay.
And then I'll just pass the rest of it on to you. State shifts and state aid payments. I don't think the general public understands what state shifts mean. I got a shift car, I had a shift pickup truck, and I know what shifting means. It means I go from here over to there.
Four-speed, three-speed, four-speed.
But really what it is, it's a delay in state aid payments. Not a shift, it's a delay.
Yeah. They call it a shift.
And if I have my mask on when I'm breathing at night and somebody decides to take it off, I know a serious problem is going to occur and a shift isn't going to help me.
No.
A delay isn't going to help me much, but a shift sounds more serious than a delay.
Okay.
Anyhow, that's the kind of stuff I'm picking away at.
Well, appreciate that.
And you're welcome to use as much or as little, I wouldn't be offended either way.
I, well, we will take a look at all of it and see how we can work that in. Actually, I have a presentation tomorrow, don't I?
Tomorrow at 4:30?
So I will try to.
There'll be time.
Get those pieces incorporated between now and tomorrow.
Probably half of them are okay, the other ones are scrapmall and you're just nibbling at me.
But again, what I'm really looking for is representatives of this community. I want you, I wanted you to listen to it from the perspective of the people you represent in terms of, does this make sense? And I think Noel, the things that you've shared have been things that you would say, there's a whole bunch of people in the community that when you say shift, think about shifting your car. Well, they don't because a lot of people don't shift their car anymore, they have an automatic. But, you know, there are pieces that are jargon because they're educational.
We got educational jargon.
Yep.
Doesn't always get into the community.
Ellen?
So I had three questions that I've heard from people when I've been talking to them, and then I had one point on the slide. So I'll say one point on the slide and then two questions. The looking forward slide, the third bullet, I just think is really critical, and the newspaper had that, I think, in a little box. And I just think it gets a little lost. So that's just a nit. I mean, that's what the visual does a nice job of showing the gap.
Well, what I may do is work with Matt and Heather to insert this in, just following that slide, because I think, I think it would make a lot of sense because we could actually point out where the $900,000 is and where the $6.7 million is. The one thing, of course, it's interesting to notice is the way we've kind of played it out is the reason it's 6.7 and not 7.6 million dollars in cuts is we would say, we're going to cut in 2013-14 regardless, which then means we brought that bullet that's over 2013-14 down to 2013-14 revenue, and therefore, then the cut now is between the revenue and the new revenue level after the, after it expires. But yeah, I think if this would make sense to kind of emphasize that, I think that's something we could insert as a new slide.
So the three questions that I've been hearing from people are, one is if they have commercial property, is, did the calculator work for them?
My understanding is that this piece works for everybody, that depending on what your property valuation is, it's a multiplication that's the same for everybody.
And then the, why aren't we just renewing at the regular level? And I know the answer, but I didn't hear it expressed as much here, and I don't know, I've just, I've been able to do the elevator talk on why we as a board decided that, but, and maybe wait to hear if that question comes up. And then the third one is, so where do I go to vote? And I don't know if that's something that we want to cover here or not.
Well, the thing is, they're going to get several other pieces. They're going to get a mailing that comes out to everybody in the community that tells them where their voting place is. And because of the fact that we've moved from all the precincts down to five, it identifies all of the precincts and where you go to vote. And that's also going, is on our website, so it'll be in multiple locations where they can find it. So I think it's probably easier to steer people to that rather than put it in because I think it would end up being a slide that's really busy because it's got all these different pieces.
It's in the levy guide.
And it's also in the levy guide, which will be coming out next week. I think the other question I think is important, and I, and you know, trying to think about how exactly to frame that. how exactly to frame that, because, you know, we even at one time talked about, well, what would happen if we drew a, continue the existing operating levy and tried to put it into this graph? And the problem is, I think it, it makes it so it's hard to sort it out. But obviously, the reality is what happens if you continue the operating levy at its current level, then it only takes a year, and then you're into the cutting mode. Because as you can think about it, we're already cutting for 2013-14. And so, given the rise in terms of the, our core expenditures, what you're going to find out is keeping the existing levy will never catch up and will begin cutting right away. As opposed to this option, which at least gives us some time where we actually have more revenue than expenditures. Again, we do kind of the same strategy we've done with the levy that was passed in 2006, and that is, we build our fund balance, cash balance, with the idea that then as we spend it down, we lengthen the time before we have to make cuts, and then we also soften the level of cuts going forward. That one, you know, again, we don't have a good clean way to try to explain that, and I guess if somebody asks it, I'll try to explain it in terms of that format. But that's there.
The slide you have with the three to four years, by just saying you don't have three to four years anymore.
No.
One, maybe.
Well, and the reality is, again, and we can actually talk about that with this piece, is the reality is, look, with the existing operating levy, see what's happened already in 2013-14, you're already making cuts because your revenue isn't keeping up with your, with your expenditures.
Anne?
To go back to Noel's shifting idea, on the, I guess that's slide four, you really described well what a shift was. And maybe what will help there is to make a bullet defining the shift, because when you describe it, it made perfect sense, but if a person goes home with their little PowerPoint thing, they might go, oh, what was that again? So maybe that would clear up a little bit.
Well, you know, I think the best example, and I use Noel as my mentor on those, because Noel always comes up with the, kind of the anecdote or the story that kind of brings that to life. But, you know, the reality in terms of the shift is it really, if you're a wage earner and you get so much money a year, and suddenly you only get 60% of it in the year it's due, and you get 40% the next year, you're in trouble. You know, you can't, can't get your bills paid, you're going to go underwater in terms of any kind of payments on house or apartment, your car, your insurance, food, whatever. You can't operate that way. And so, for the state to believe that they can simply kind of borrow their way out of the, out of the situation, while none of us will argue that shifting is better than cutting, because the hope is eventually we will get the money back, it still is a very, very difficult situation, especially as we believe almost every district in the state, by the end of this year or the beginning of next year, will be into the borrowing mode, because you can't come up with enough cash balance to offset the reduction in cash that you're receiving. And basically, the state gets then to sit on that cash until they start to pay it back sometime in the future.
And can you remind us again how long it was the last time they did a shift like this?
The last time they had a shift of this magnitude, I believe it was closer to 15.
Before they paid back?
Before they were able to pay it all, all back. And they eventually did, they got it clear back to 9010, but it took an extremely long time.
15 years?
15 years.
It's nearly a public school education time.
Well, hopefully it's more. Hopefully our kiddos are out in 13th grade.
I didn't know.
Yes. It was that second time in third grade, right?
Fourth grade.
Yes, our fourth grade. Did you have something else, Ann? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Were you done, Ann?
Yes, I was.
Okay. Then we'll move to John.
What I, I guess what I didn't hear in the presentation is, if the levy passes, when does the money start flowing in?
Good point.
To the district.
Okay. And it starts flowing to us in 2012-13. So what it does is eliminates that dip that we see in the 2013-14 year, because you'd actually then see more revenue coming in during the 2012-13 years, so that we would not have to make the cut in 2013-14.
So it would start for people paying their taxes in the May, May of?
The May of 2012, correct. And although they pay their taxes in May, we're not able to start drawing on those dollars until July 1st.
So it doesn't change our, the budget that we've passed for this school year?
No.
It's, it's about what we can do in the following.
Going forward, exactly. Thank you.
Julie?
A couple of things. When, the very first slide where the ability to achieve our district mission has been compromised?
Yes.
I really liked that as the introduction. You may recall in 2006, it was quality at the crossroads, and I thought that was, was strong as well. But I'm just wondering, and certainly would welcome everyone's input on this, but do you think we need to say to achieve our district mission of? You know, that's sort of assuming that people understand we're all about a really excellent quality program. And again, which leads to us comparing ourselves to Edina, Wazetta, some of those programs. And I don't know if that's something, you know, one thing I think you do extremely well is talk to the points, and I'm sure, obviously, the district levy guide is much more in-depth in terms of explaining some things. But I love that introduction of achieving our district mission has been compromised, because it speaks to how committed we are to it, and that we have tried to stay the course with, with our mission, but we just can't do it for, you know, the factors you explained. And I don't know if something more has to be said there in terms of, does our community understand what our district mission is, that we are, you know, and I'm just asking for people's thoughts on that.
And we might be able, I mean, we might be able to massage that into the title, into the, into the core of the title.
We work so hard.
Or just put a slide in between the title slide and this one, that just has the mission of the Northfield Public Schools is this.
Sure. And then say achieving it's been compromised. That would let them know, this is our mission, our mission's been compromised. That might be a really clean way to do it.
Or could it be as simple as achieving our district mission of delivering educational excellence? I mean, that we set the bar really high for ourselves, and that's one reason why, you know, we are so, we keep that bar high, and the reason we have asked for, you know, the amount we've asked for.
Okay.
I also really appreciate the historical perspective, and I'm wondering, like, to Noel's point, where we talked about elimination of program options, you know, where we say reductions in, reduction in teachers, I know it was since, you know, in six years, it's 14 teachers at the high school and the middle school, and five teachers at the elementary school. So, I mean, you think about seven more teachers being at the high school than what are there now, and the fact that we would reduce that even further. You know, and it's, again, things that I know you speak to, you know, when you, when you embellish the points.
And I, it just kind of, the struggle is, is how much detail to put in this in order for, for, because again, we're now at 8 o'clock, and I think we were, we were probably about 25 minutes, 30 minutes maybe, in terms of, because I went a little more in-depth in some of the responses, but what I'm trying to do is kind of keep this thing to what I think is a reasonable length of time for most adults to sit and listen to you before they get a chance to ask questions.
I agree.
But yeah, it's, I think if people ask the question about, were there reductions? Yeah, we can talk about the teachers reduced and the custodial staff and support staff and administrators, and the $175,000 for the transportation costs that were cut, and a number of other things that happened as part of that process.
Well, I agree, as we talk to it, because I think probably the most impactful statement is $4 million for 17% of our, of our district's budget's already been cut. I mean, that's pretty impactful right there. Then, in addition, benchmarking with other districts that we've done, I think is really important. And I know, of course, the media will be talking at great length, hopefully, about the number of communities going out for levies. There are, I believe, 75 districts that are staying even, so, you know, just asking for renewal. So I know we were talking about the struggle to explain what would happen if we just renewed the levy, but with 75 communities not increasing taxes and being able to stay with their existing levy, certainly we don't understand what shortfalls will have as a result of that, but, you know, we are asking for more. Of, what is it, 140 districts going for levies or so?
There's 133 that are going out this fall for, for an operating levy, and yes, the majority of those are renewals. A lot of the superintents I've talked to have just said, and some of them, of course, are right, right to the wall. I talked to Denny Carlson in Anoka Hennepin, and he said, you know, if we, if we lose this levy this year, we're at the end, and we lose $48 million going forward into, into 2012-13. He said, you know, if it doesn't go this time, we're done. And I think for many of them, I think what they've done is said, at this point, all we can hope for is to try to keep the levy in place that we currently have. I think our discussions over the summer and whatever, really, we're looking at the idea that doing that in terms of just continuing the operating levy as it is, really shortens the time when we maintain stability. We really only gain about a year in terms of that maintenance, and we're already starting to cut. And again, with the, with the graphic that we showed you, with the operating levy still in place, we're already cutting $900,000 out of the budget. It's not going to help just to keep the levy up. I mean, it will keep us from going into SOD, it'll, it will soften the cuts that we'd have to make, but we would still be cutting probably almost every single year. And the biggest problem there is, you know, we cannot tax our way out of the fact that 70% of the budget is, is coming from the state, and probably should be more than 70%. One of the graphics we looked at, which was really interesting, was, and trying to figure out what graphics to include and what graphics to put into the levy guide, we had a graphic that looked at the amount of state aid coming into us over the last several years. And what we saw is a peak that occurred about three or four years ago, and then every year from then on, the amount of state aid went down in terms of the total state aid that we received. So that, you know, what's problematic is, we're trying to fill the hole between what's coming from the state and federal government and what it takes just to run the current budget. And so, yeah, it's, it's a struggle with, you know, how do we, how do we share that piece? And, you know, again, I think our thinking of, if we're going to ask for levy, and this is the most difficult thing that school boards have to do, if we have the opportunity to ask, we need to ask, and we need to see where our community lands on this, because, you know, the alternative, which unfortunately may come to fruition of saying, well, maybe we can only ask for what we have, will, is potentially there a year or two down the road. And the other alternative, obviously, of losing the levy altogether and having no levy is catastrophic.
Anybody else? Noel?
Has there been a comment, or will there be a comment regarding the enrollment in the district? Is it up or down? And is that significant to this discussion? If there are people who think our enrollment is going down, there may be.
Well, you know, as you know, the enrollment in this district has been within about 100 for the last decade. We've kind of looked at numbers for the first couple of weeks, and actually, we've got numbers that are a little bit up in several buildings right now. That all kind of sorts itself out, usually by the 1st of October, and we'll have kind of a final sense of where that is. But the interesting thing is basically, elementary buildings are up. In fact, I think all of our buildings are now at least 500, and I think Sibley's at 573, if my memory serves me correctly, and I think Bridgewater's at about 550. So, and basically, our middle school and high school are holding their own. So the situation that we have is, I think, that we're going to be able to say, as we have for the last decade or more, you know, our enrollment is stable. And so, that's not, that's not the trigger, that's not the reason why we have a lot less money to spend. It's also, of course, the part of the problem with the current state funding formula, because the state funding formula, formula is driven on a per pupil basis. But if you think about it, if I lose four, four kids per grade, so that's 13 grades, help me, my math, four times 13?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two, right? We could lose 52 kids, that's one kid per section in the elementaries, and four kids across each grade level at the middle school and high school. We could not cut one single staff member with a loss of 50-some kids. But if you look at the math in terms of what 50-some kids give you in terms of state aid, it's a significant drop, which is why districts that are seeing, you know, significant enrollment drops, you know, are continually looking for aid or support from the state in terms of dealing with dropping off of enrollment. But that's really not been our situation to this point.
Jeff, did you want to jump in?
Yeah, what is your thought on the recent reduction in the status of the state's credit rating?
I'm not happy with it. And if you remember earlier on, Jeff, I talked about the fact that I would much rather have, have them shift money than cut us, and, you know, because, and if you remember when they borrowed money, I said I'd much rather have them borrow money from us than have to go borrow money themselves. Well, they didn't borrow money, but because of all the things that happened as they tried to work through the, the final budget deal that they ended up with, the credit, you know, rating companies just brought them down anyway. It's concerning to us, because really, that state underlying rating has an impact on everything we do as a school district. And although now I think our rating matches the state's, double A plus, so we can probably borrow money at the same rate the state borrows money. But for lots of districts around the state that don't have a double A plus rating, their, their underlying rating is what was used to borrow money to build buildings, to do technology levies or other kinds of levies, when they need to do short-term borrowing for cash flow, all the kinds of things. So it's, it's concerning, because as a state, one of the things I think you want to do is to protect your credit rating, because you never know when you're going to have to, have to ask for money. And I think we want to be in a position as a state where we don't do that. Just like as a district, we don't want to be in a position where we're in statutory operating debt, or where we're in a position where we don't have any money, and we're having to borrow money all the time. Because whether it's at the local level or at the state level, if we borrow money, every dollar that we borrow and pay interest on, that interest just goes away. Bankers are happy, people who own money are happy, but basically, dollars that we pay in interest don't help one single kid in this district with anything. And so, you know, we want to try to avoid that as much as we can. Okay?
Anybody else have anything to say?
Thank you very much. I think that this, just leave that slide up there.
Okay.
I think this PowerPoint does a really nice job of just kind of matter-of-factly marching us through where we've been, because we have been cutting and trimming and tightening our belt for many, many years, and, you know, we've been able to hang on because we have this community support and because we're so careful with our fund balance, and we really have held on much longer than most districts. You know, you hear about districts to the north that have 40-plus kids in an elementary classroom, and we're not there yet. But the one slide, I think, that doesn't really tell the full story is, is the last one, and I do want to come back to the one that was just up there. And I do want to come back to the one that was just up there.
Okay.
The one that says, if the operating levy is not approved, we're going to cut one hundred and fifteen to one hundred and twenty staff members. And I think for people to hear that class sizes are going to go up by four to six students in every classroom, that has meaning if you volunteer in an elementary classroom that already has, you know, high twenties in the classroom. You see what a difference that will make. And that has meaning if you have a high school kid that comes home and tells you, you know, Mom, there's not enough desks in our room for all the students that are in it. I think the story that the community needs to understand is that to keep that class size increase that low, we are going to dramatically, dramatically change this school district. You know, when we say some program options have been eliminated, that this, I just think this is going to be catastrophic. For, I think the hallmark of Northfield is that we really do have comprehensive programming. We have ways to support students of many different ability levels, many different interests, and we have that in the classroom, in the academic program, and we have it in the co-curricular program, and we have it in the music programs and the arts that we provide. And to keep class size increases that small, we're going to go to a very different style of programming. And people need to understand what a dramatic reconfiguration of our district that is going to be. You know, every time we go into these budget cuts hearings and we start saying, okay, we're going to eliminate the Gates program and try to do it this other way, or we're going to reduce the art offerings, or whatever we're going to do, or change the music offerings, people say to us, please don't cut anymore. Ask the community for more money. We will pay for this, we value this. And I think, you know, the other, the one about the fifty-seven districts, the fact of the matter is that our community expects a lot from this school district, and we provide that. We provide extraordinary programming for the kids in this district. We have a gem here. And we do it for a lot less money than the districts that we compare ourselves to. Our kids can compete with the best of any district in this state, and we do it for a lot less. I mean, we're, I think we're a poster child for doing a lot for not much money. And so, we can hang on to this gem if people are willing to pony up that little bit a month, and I don't want, I know times are tough for people, but six dollars a month or twelve dollars a month to hang on to what we have, I think is well, well worth it. And I just think that's the story that really needs to get out there, is that this isn't just increasing class sizes, this is really changing the tenor of this district, and people will not recognize it if we have to cut six point seven million dollars. So that's my.
So you'd like maybe a little more detailing of that last statement?
Well, a little more of, this isn't like the cuts we've done before. This isn't belt tightening.
Yeah.
This is, okay, we're going to have to start with, what do we need to meet the state's standards? And is there anything else we can do beyond that? And?
Well, if you think about it, a hundred and twenty staff members is basically almost a quarter of the staff in the district, including teachers and everybody else.
So you think about your analogy to a hospital. If you were going to cut a quarter of the staff at a hospital?
What would you have?
What would your patient experience look like? You know, if you're going to cut a quarter of the staff at a school district, what are our children's experiences going to look like? I think that is something people really need to understand.
And as you said, unfortunately, we can, all we have to do is look north to see exactly what that's looking like. It's looking like the forty-one kids in the classroom and situations where, you know, buildings that have been identified as blue ribbon schools of excellence and suddenly have huge enrollments in terms of that piece. But I understand, too, we may want to massage a little bit to help people understand it's not only about class sizes. We originally had actually identified what we thought the class sizes would look like.
Yeah, and that does not tell the story.
And people said that just doesn't tell the story. So I think we need to look at the other piece to talk a little bit about what it would change. And as you said, I think the key piece is, you would have to start with what's required by state statute to be offered. Those classes would have to be provided. At that point, then, whatever's left is going to have to then result in cutting back of anything that's an elective class, which means languages, it means music programs, it means art programs, it means industrial tech programs, it means co-curricular extracurricular activities. All of those pieces then become a question as to what, if any, of those programs can be maintained. Because in those larger classes, what you're going to end up with is fewer teachers with more kids teaching a much smaller variety of class offerings than we have right now.
Yeah. Yeah, and maybe that's the way to say it.
Good.
It's just, you know, much smaller variety, of course.
Okay, Hannah, you got that captured, so we can do something with it? Good.
Okay, well, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
And thank you all.
Now, we go from that into other fun activities. So Stephanie is here to tell us about the proposed 2011 Pay-2012 property tax levy, and I'm glad that the state made its way through its backlog so that we could meet our statutory deadlines. And I know that created this extraordinary amount of work for you, but you did a great job putting this together, despite the state's delays.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, yeah, tonight, we'll be discussing the payable 2012 levy. A little different flavor with all than all the levy information that Dr. Richardson just provided to you. This is the levy prior to any assumptions of the passage of the levy referendum in November. And so, these are dollars that will go to support our fiscal year twelve thirteen budget, or the twelve thirteen school year. So a couple of the items that I'd like to review with you tonight are the certification timelines, legislative changes that were enacted this year that are impacting the proposed levy, as well as any changes in the limitation calculations, and then finalizing our discussion with an analysis of the proposed levy. The certification timeline, as was mentioned, was delayed due to the state shutdown, and reports became available with the data on September sixteenth, so just over a little over a week ago. In order to accommodate the three-week shutdown, there's really been a shared burden, if you will, by the Minnesota Department of Education, the various counties across the state, as well as the school districts, all experiencing about a week less turnaround time to take their data, to analyze it, verify its accuracy, present it, and then get boards and other governing units to approve them. This delay has pushed the certification process back to October seventh. Typically, that's done at the end of September, but what school boards are required to do this year is to have that certified to the county auditor, the home county auditor, by October seventh. We also have until October seventh to make any changes at, through Minnesota Department of Education, which complicates things a little bit with that overlapping timeline. By November twenty-fourth, county auditors then will take all of the data that they've compiled from school districts and other taxing authorities like cities, and compile the mailing notice that needs to be sent to all of the taxpayers in the area. The final certification process will, has to take place by December twenty-eighth, where districts must adopt their final property tax and certify it to their home county auditor. So we would be asking to return to you at our board meeting in December to review those final, that final certification process, and ask for your adoption of that. Going along with this, in parallel, is the overlapping election timeline, and these are just a few of the dates. There's many, many deadlines that have to be met in order to meet our requirements heading up into the election date. But between October ninth and the twenty-fourth, the district is required to send out a notice of the special election to all the taxpayers. This notice will include polling places, the impact, proposed impact to their property taxes, as well as dates, et cetera. On November eighth, obviously, the election day, with the canvassing dates following between the eleventh and the eighteenth, and then the district is required to certify to the Commissioner of Education the results of the election fifteen days after canvassing. So with this, these overlapping timelines, the county won't have the election results prior to compiling all of the truth and taxation notices. So I just brought in a sample of a truth and taxation document that the county will be sending to taxpayers. And as typical, in the center there will be the actual 2011 taxes for their specific property, as well as the proposed 2012 property tax that we're, we have before you tonight. Then the district, the school districts are typically, if there's multiple taxing jurisdictions, they're usually in the center there, and their tax portions are broken into two line items, that which is voter-approved, and all the other local levies. And then with this year, given our referendum, the election coming up, there will be text added within that area of their statements indicating that these amounts for proposed 2012 may adjust according to the results of the election. One of the largest legislative changes that's impacting the property taxes this year is the homestead market value and the repeal that's effective in the 2012 payable year. This actually originated out of the Tax Committee, not out of the Education Committee, so it was a little challenging for the Department of Education to define how that can all be calculated through its tax reporting systems with the county. At first, the bill was summarized by the House Research Department, and it seemed fairly harmless in that it was, its intent was still to provide property tax relief to homeowners of low-valued homes by eliminating the credit that the state paid and moving to excluding that value from the tax calculations. The reality as this was playing out and the calculations were becoming more clear was that what this had done is shifted a funding source that was paid through the state, this credit, onto property taxpayers throughout the state. And this was an increase of approximately two hundred and sixty-one million dollars across all local government units, and within that, there are fifty-eight million makes-up increases in school district property taxes. To partially neutralize the impact on homeowners, what was done in lieu of paying for this credit was to exclude from the value of their property the equivalent to what would have been paid by the state in credit. Essentially, what that is, it's approximately forty percent on the first seventy-six thousand dollars of the home value, and then that phases out between nine percent of the value above seventy-six thousand up to a final phase out at, I think it's four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars value of a home. The result of this exclusion, unfortunately, had dropped the overall state net tax capacity by approximately five percent. And the result of this is that the state's reduction in the net tax capacity increased the rate that needed to be applied to all the remaining property taxes in order to raise the same amount of levy. And so, we're looking at the same dollars, there's less of a base to spread that across because we've excluded the value of the homes. The impact will vary widely between districts. The reality is, it will impact districts that have a greater or have more low-valued homestead property than those who have, you know, higher-value property. The elimination of the state-paid credit will increase school levies approximately two point six percent on average. One of the complications that this will present to taxpayers, and I wanted to bring this sample back, this is the truth and taxation statement. One of the realities that folks may see that may be very confusing, and I just, I wanted you all aware of it, is they may look at their, I've blown up the sections of the statement so we could actually see them, but in the center area, right above the actual proposed taxes, is the property classification for each individual property tax owner, and it has the value of that home for 2011 and then the value for 2012. So with the exclusion of equivalent to the credit, they may look at their property tax statement this year, looking at 2011, seeing their value at a hundred thousand dollars. In pay 2012, because of this exclusion, the value actually drops eighty-two thousand, but again, because that rate went up, they may actually see an increase in their property taxes. That may be very confusing, you know, hey, wait a minute, my value went down, my taxes are going up. And again, this is going to vary widely. It's very difficult to present and communicate a standard on what will happen to individual property taxes, because the valuations change and fluctuate so much. But I thought that this was very important to bring to your attention, because I think it can provide a fair amount of confusion to property taxpayers when they get their For this year, aside from the homestead credit, the market credit, which is obviously the most significant, there are no new levy categories either added or eliminated. In the 2011 legislation, there was an increase in the career and tech ed levy component. It is, it's a fairly small component of our levy here in Northfield, but what this did, it actually initially increased the funding for the career and tech ed by going from a lesser of eighty dollars per student in grade ten through twelve, or twenty-five percent of approved expenditures, to going to the greater of the eighty dollars per student in grades nine through twelve, or thirty-five percent of the approved expenditures. The problem that they ran into as they were working through this is the legislation also enacted a cap to the career and tech ed levy. So the cap that was placed on the statewide totals actually prevented the implementation of the new formula. In order to get around that as a temporary one-time fix, what they have done is essentially increase our career and tech ed levy by approximately sixteen percent statewide to reach that cap in the funding. In looking at the proposed 2012 property tax, we're looking at fourteen point seven million dollars. And this is a breakdown of the various components, our general debt service fund making up the largest at thirty-nine percent, and this is, the debt service is voter-approved, it's a voter-approved component of our levy, when we go out and sell bonds to either move forward with new construction, as in the past with the middle school, or most recently Bridgewater, those two schools are the most recent, or any other kinds of modifications or constructions that take place, we do need to get voter approval for that. The next largest is the general fund, the referendum fund, that Dr. Richardson provided a great deal of information to on tonight, the thirty-seven percent, which we are asking for renewal this November. The third largest component of the levy is the general fund, kind of other category included in this is our levies for health and safety, some of our facilities' operating capital, and alternative facilities. The next largest, the operating capital levy at five percent, that is the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that will be on the ballot for, in November of this year. And last, but certainly not least, is our community service fund that makes up approximately three percent of the overall levy. So as we look at the seventeen, or the, excuse me, the fourteen point seven million dollar proposed levy, what this slide does is really look at it in three different ways. The top three lines here, we have a subtotal by the fund, and I've aligned the pay 2011 next to the proposed 2012. And I'm showing the total general fund here on that top line, followed by community service and general debt service fund. And then with each of those lines, it shows the increase or decrease within each of those funds to reflect an overall increase of two point seven two percent. Again, I said statewide averages for the impact of the homestead market credit was approximately two point six percent on average. The estimated amount for Northfield Public Schools is two point four six percent. So the vast majority of the increase is a result of the homestead market credit change that took place at the legislative session. The second way that this is reflected in the center area here is the subtotal by truth and taxation category, showing how much of our levy is voter-approved versus how much is those other levy categories, health and safety, alternative facilities, et cetera. is those other levy categories, health and safety, alternative facilities, et cetera. And then on the bottom here are the subtotal by tax base. This top line is referendum market value, and that is basically the referendum that was voter-approved. And then the bottom line reflects the net tax capacity levies proposed this year at $8.8 million. And this bottom one, just going back to that homestead market credit again, the net tax capacity levies are the ones that are impacted by the homestead credit. And so what you can see, when the majority of our levy is made up of net tax capacity levies, that's having a greater impact, that change in the homestead market credit that is moved from the credit to the exclusion. I think that is all I have, but I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Anyone have any questions here, Stephanie? John?
How does this amount compare to the, to the cap of our current levy? What, is this the most that we could, we could currently levy, or is this?
This is the most, well, this is the most that we can levy prior to the election. And so should the voters approve the referendum in November, that would increase what this proposal is. So when we come back to you in December, in the December meeting to certify the final levy, that would be reflective of the new dollar amounts. And I guess there's some other variations, you know, some of these levies have to be approved at the state level prior, and so, you know, there, there is, we do have the ability to levy greater depending on if we were to submit information, you know, additional health and safety projects that were approved. So I guess as far as what's been approved at the state and what we have authority to tax on, this is the, this is the cap, correct?
Stephanie, I think maybe you'd back up a slide or two, where you, where you have the slide that, there we go, where you show the part that's under referendum market value?
Mm-hmm.
That is the operating levy, right?
Correct, and the, and the small amount of equity revenue, which is all levy-paid.
So, so basically, John, the 2012 proposed levy at 5.8 is basically the maximum we can levy at $1,270 per pupil?
Correct.
So what would happen in the, in the case that we move to 1604 is that that number would increase. But again, the other important piece is the referendum, the, the impact of the, of the changes in terms of the homestead market value credit don't impact the operating levy.
Correct, correct.
Because it's based on referendum market value, not on net tax capacity. In other words, all the ag lands taken out, all the seasonal wrecked properties taken out of that referendum market value. So it's a, it's a smaller pot of money to start with.
Okay, you've, you've lost me there because the referendum market value looks to me like it's about half the voter-approved levy, so.
Right, so the other part is, is all debt service, is the other major piece, because you've got the middle school, you've got Bridgewater, you've got the remaining piece of Sibley in terms of construction, you've got any other, any other bonds that we've taken out.
For, for general betterment, facility betterment projects, over the years, we still have some of those outstanding debts as well.
Okay. Anybody else?
I was just going to say, in a nutshell, what does this mean to Joe or Jane Public? I mean, when they're talking about their houses and getting their taxes raised, not taxes raised, I mean, it's, it's a tax increase. So just the confusion between this and what they're voting on, I mean, it just, obviously, it's just, it's hard to understand.
Yeah, it is, it is complicated, and what really complicates it, I, I believe, is legislative change to the homestead market value credit. It, to, to communicate what this means to the average taxpayer becomes very difficult because valuations vary so greatly, especially in recent years. Overall, this is an increase in our levy revenue for the district of 2.72%. Now that doesn't automatically equate to a 2.72% increase on a property tax. It's going to depend, that reality is going to depend on what their current valuation is. Has it changed from the prior year? How does the market exclusion factor into that? So, so that's a very difficult, it's a very difficult question to answer because it varies so widely. But I can say our levy, our levy revenue is increasing 2.72%.
And this is, this is just, is just the existing levies, the existing referendum that's in place, the existing debt service that's in place, this is what we anticipate, the, the increase being if you, if nothing was happening in November. But the other thing is Stephanie mentioned is a piece of why this is where it is, is that the state has chosen to shift $261 million from state aid, which would have been the old homestead exemption, where they actually were paying the counties and back, in terms of dollars back into their budget, so that when they spread the dollars, they were able to have that exemption in place, to where now it's just exclusion. So they're subtracting the part of the, of the value of the property from the, from market, from the market value, which should have, should have the impact of reducing taxes. But the problem is, when everybody, when all homeowners who have lower-priced properties have their valuation go down, then the overall valuation that the district or a city or a county has also goes down, and therefore, if you're trying to levy this, even levy the same amount of money, it might cost you more. So it's, the tough part is, when you ask Joan and Jane, you have to, and they ask you that question, you have to say it depends. It depends on what happened to your valuation in comparison to other people in your community. What happened to your value, did it go down more than others? Did it go down about the same? Did your valuation, for whatever reason, you added on to your property or remodeled, go up? You're going to be impacted differently in each of those cases depending on what your individual valuation does in comparison to the average valuation change across the district or county or city.
That's why we refer those questions to Stephanie, because she can read those and make sense of them.
We, we have tea leaves and a crystal ball in her room.
We have our resident expert. Yeah. Anybody else? Julie?
I had one quick question. So when you go to the, the slide, the last slide where it shows the, right, the referendum market value increase, is inflation in there yet?
It is, yes.
Because if you remember, our current referendum has...
I know we have inflation, I just didn't know if that was the, only the homestead market value credit, whatever, or if that also included inflation.
That's actually the inflationary piece. It's that the bottom line, the net tax capacity levies are the ones that are really impacted by the homestead market value. But the one above that is the inflationary component.
We need to reinforce that.
The referendum levy, the levy that people vote on in November, is not affected by this change.
Correct.
The net tax capacity, which is separate from referendum market value, is, is what is affected. So people's overall tax bill may change, but the net tax capacity is not what our, our referendum levy is, is based on.
Correct.
So that the referendum market value is not affected by this change.
Not what our operating levy referendum is impacted by, but it will impact our capital projects levy because it, it is calculated on net tax capacity. It is not scheduled to go up at all.
Yeah.
But, but there may be an increased impact that's created there because the net tax capacity is going to change.
But the, but the operating levy, the, the most important question facing our voters, is not affected by this change in the, the legislative...
That's correct.
Correct.
Good. Thank you. Okay. Are we ready to vote on this? I'd ask for a motion to certify to the county auditors the 2011 payable 2012 proposed certified net, net tax levy in the amount of $14,710,054.31. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ellen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ann. Any further questions, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. And then we have the annual report on curriculum instruction and student achievement. We saw the draft of this at the September 12th meeting, and now we've got the, the final version of it.
Yes, and really, the thing for us to take a look at is on page five, and that, again, takes us back to the shutdown of the government this summer, because we don't have, the, the Department of Ed has not yet published the individual student growth reports, so we're just estimating at some results here, and this is simply a disclaimer that says, really, you know, this isn't going to be accurate until we get that information from the state, and then that will be made available online, and we'll let people know that they can go in and get the actual information. But the state was not interested in changing the deadline for the boards to approve this report, therefore, we all know this isn't a very complete report.
So, so is, my understanding, if the state gets the waiver from No Child Left Behind, then the state may not release those test results anyway? Was there talk about that?
I'm, I'm not equipped to talk about the waiver.
Based, based on the information that came out today and over the weekend, they're indicating that they will not, not finalize the acceptance of the first round of waivers until November.
Okay.
And then they will tell us after November whether the waivers are going to be accepted. So at this point, I think every district is going to end up having to go forward and do the full efforts of No Child Left Behind for, for this additional year. If the waivers pass, then that may change things for 2012, 13, but all the work that's involved in going through the process we have right now will continue to be in place.
And so the Department of Ed is planning to release those test results?
Supposedly sometime soon after September 30th.
Right.
Okay, and then we can just put those in this online document?
And we'll let, we'll let the public know that it's been changed.
Okay.
Updated.
Okay. Anyone else?
And I always like to thank everyone who's worked so hard on this. Heather Kohinka had not only this publication, but the levy guide, so we've been, she's been extremely busy and, and has done a wonderful job of pulling this all together and all of us and all of our changes and so on. And I always like to acknowledge the administrators and the curriculum people, the testing, Roger's left, the assessment people, because this report is really the product of lots of people's work.
It's a huge effort. Thank you, Hannah. Are we ready to approve the 10-11 annual report on curriculum instruction and student performance? Is there a motion to approve?
I'm moving.
To approve. Moved by Ann. Did Noel a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent grouping, I just remind you, there were a few things in the table file to add to the consent grouping. Is there anything anybody would like to pull? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping?
So moved.
Moved by John, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ellen, any discussion? All those in favor approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Future meetings for the community, I just want to make sure everybody knows, on Tuesday, October 4th at 7:00 in the high school auditorium, there will be a public information meeting about the upcoming votes on November 8th. Again, we're asking for revocation and renewal at a higher level of our existing operating levy, and an extension of our current capital projects levy. And I do hope that people will make every effort to become informed about what is at One opportunity to do that will be this October 4th meeting, although I think as Dr. Richardson mentioned, there's also a lot of information on the district website about that. And then we have our two regular meetings in October, October 10th and the 24th, and I guess I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Moved by Noel, second by John, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. And we'll move to the district...